Okay, welcome to this evening's April 24, Tuesday's Daily City Recreation Commission meeting. And for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the city council chambers and submit to staff members early in the meeting as possible. And also persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. So let me have a call to order, please?
That's your job. I'll take role though. Well, first we need to do the...
Okay, I'll go ahead. I'll maybe pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge to the flag and then the roll call.
A pledge to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, what do you call a call? Commissioner Landos?
Present.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Present.
And Chair Pastor?
Present. Thank you.
Let the record show that we do have a quorum this evening. Thank you for coming.
And may I have an approval of this evening's agenda, please?
Motion approved.
Okay, those in favor of this evening's agenda do say aye?
Aye.
And the approval of our January minutes of this year, may I have an approval of that, please?
Approved.
Okay, those in favor of the approval do say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And moving on to director's reports.
Good evening, Chair Pastor. We have a special guest presenter this evening, Mr. Jimmy Foo from Daily City's Department of Public Works Engineering Division. You might recall, a couple of years ago, we had a presentation about a tot lot improvement at the Norwood Tot Lot. It was a grant-funded project that was quite popular in the neighborhood. Well, now there's another one to talk about, and that is the Altaloma Tot Lot, and I will turn it over to Jimmy for his presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Altaloma Tot Lot renovation project. My name is Jimmy Foo. I'm with the Department of Public Works Engineering Division.
Welcome.
So this is a project location of the Altaloma Tot Lot. You'll see it's a triangular piece in the center. It's about 5,000 square feet. Altaloma Avenue runs right in front of it. Del Prado Drive is towards the bottom of the page. You have Eastmore Avenue further up north, St. Francis Boulevard to the right off of the page, and Westmore High School off to the left. This is what the tot lot looks like today. So we have a dino climber off to the right and some swings to the left. As far as playground structures, that's about it. There are some existing planners in the back that does not appear to have been used for some time, some tables and some benches spread throughout. Here's a view from the southern corner with Westmore High School in the background. You'll see there's some lawn, but there is some opportunity here for improvements. And this is a view from the north looking south with St. Francis Boulevard in the back. Our proposed work, we are proposing to renovate the entire site, the entire 5,000-square-foot site. This is a 3D rendering of the proposed play structure. These are exactly the structures that we are proposing. They're not conceptual. They were conceptual, but now we're taking it to final design. These are age-appropriate structures. The structure to the left is suitable for ages five to 12. The structure to the right is suitable for ages two to five, and we have some swings in the back. And the triangle a lot, we're basically standing on Altaloma Drive and looking at the future park. This is a view from the back of the park. Again, it's the same structures, but with a different view. And this is looking at Altaloma Avenue from the back. We are proposing to resurface the tot lot. It's going to be the same engineered wood fiber that we're currently using, but we are going to make some drainage improvements. You're not going to be able to see them, but they're going to help with the longevity of the wood fiber. So the project is in 95% plans right now. Here's kind of a progress layout of the plan. We're doing the design completely in-house. As you see with the structures laid out in plan view, that we are able to take up a lot of the site. We can utilize the space that's in the site now. The dash line is kind of the fall zone. That's where you're not supposed to put vertical obstructions. A part of the plan is to add a six-foot landscaping strip along the back of the sidewalk fronting the park. We're working with our Parks Maintenance Division to provide a planting scheme consisting of local drought-tolerant plants. Hopefully that adds some aesthetics to the park and bring people in. There are a couple of existing trees to the corner on the right. We're hoping to protect those through construction. So in a nutshell, that's the project. The Public Works Department did do a round of public outreach. Our director wanted to make sure that the proposed improvements are fitting with the recreational needs of the neighborhood. We don't want to be providing play structures where there aren't any kids. So we did advertise through the Public Works websites, as well as the dailycity.org main webpage. We worked with the sustainability coordinator to advertise through Nextdoor, particularly, specifically in the St. Francis neighborhood. And we also were in the Daily Wire for two months. Staff also placed a site notice at the site, so neighbors will see it. It had a brief description of the proposed improvements, the conceptual plans that you saw earlier, and also a QR code that linked them to a survey. It was a quick seven-question survey to just kind of gauge if we were on the right track. Responses were overly overall positive. A lot of parents saying that they had kids of the appropriate age range, and they're hoping for this to be built quickly. So we closed the survey April 15, but it's still available online if you guys are interested. So here's the sign that we have at the tot lot, still there today. So funding, where's the money coming from for this project? We are getting a grant, a Housing Related Parks Program grant administered by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. This grant program rewards local governments for creating low-income housing, and the money awarded to us is earmarked for park improvements that benefit the community. So in addition to the $75,000 that we are getting through this grant, we are also putting in $150,000 of developer parking lot fees. This funding is earmarked again for park improvements. So the total budget for this project is around $225,000. And here we have the schedule. The 95% plans are currently being prepared in-house. We're hoping to have the final 100% plans completed by next month, go out to bid in July, award the construction contract in August, with construction beginning in October through substantial completion next year, January. So the HRP funds that we are given, the $75,000, does have a expenditure deadline. We need to use those funds by June of 2019. And as you can see, the schedule, we're in good shape. So with that, I'd like to thank Director Carron for giving me the opportunity to come here tonight, and I'll take any questions that the council might have.
Well, as I'm looking at your diagram, again, thanks for bringing this together and holding those workshops for the community to get their surveys. The planting out in the front area, is that where I see the diagram now, is that going to replace part of the sidewalk or back off the sidewalk into the existing site?
So it's going to be a six-foot planting strip right behind the existing back of sidewalk.
Okay.
The city right-of-way actually starts a few feet behind the back of sidewalk, so this planting strip is going to be straddling that property line with a part of it in the private city-owned property and a part of it in the city's right-of-way.
Would it also kind of like follow, or maybe follow the path of what was done at the ceremony library where it's kind of like drainage, taking account of drainage and, you know, that type of nature planning out there?
So we are designing this project in-house. We don't have a landscaper onboard, per se, but I will say in respect to stormwater drainage, no stormwater leaves the site. We are, if you see the hatched areas, these elongated hatch areas, those are gravel drainage. So all the stormwater from the site are being channeled through these drains into these onsite storage areas so that no stormwater run off the site.
That's what I was looking to lead to. All right, thank you. Any others?
Just a quick question. The dino climber is kind of cool. Will you guys be able to reuse it at another tot lot or...?
You know, when this project initially came up, the thought was everything that's there right now, with the exception of two benches, and the Altaloma Tot Lot sign itself, we're hoping to salvage that, but everything else we're designated to go. But every time I go to the park, I see an opportunity for it to be used elsewhere, and I think before we actually get into construction, I'll have that conversation again with the Director of Public Works.
Yeah, there might be room at March Bank or something.
Jimmy, familiarize me with dino?
The dino climber? He was hiding in one of the pictures.
I call it a dino climber. I'm not really sure what the official term is, but it looks like a stegosaurus-type of play structure suitable for a younger child.
Okay.
And in this picture, it's kind of off to the right there. It's in the shadows.
Okay. And the fall area that surrounds all the structures, is that going to be soft-type material or a fixed, like cushioned, material?
So the entire site is going to be, again, engineered wood fiber, regardless if it's going to be inside the fall zone or outside.
Meaning wood chips?
Wood chips, exactly.
This is going to be easy maintenance, keeping it. And also, yeah, I do know about the storm drains that are going to be there. They're going to be more effective. The only thing I see if it does get a little crowded, we, I would like to see probably a little more benches?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good layout of the pictures there, because sometimes, you know, you might have a group of 12, and then kids come over, and then all of a sudden you have six and four others. That crowds up. So you can have different families sitting down at the benches sometimes, and some people have baby strollers along with them, you know, that may probably more.
So we can look into additional site furnishing? The two benches up here?
Just a thought, yeah. Probably an extra bench or two.
It looks great.
It looks really good. I mean, it looks really good. I've seen some of these parks already around.
It's bright. I like that, especially in the fog.
And the space is being used just about right. What's on the center between the top and the right side playground? What's that center that I see on the plans? Is that a small retaining wall or...?
Oh, no, so that's the rock stormwater storage.
Okay.
I'm glad you guys were able to keep the swings. They're a hot, popular item, so I know it takes a lot of space for the fall zone for them, so it looks great.
Great. Thank you, Jimmy. Well done. Great. I look forward to seeing that break ground.
Do you have a picture of those two trees?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay.
So at one point on the north side of the park, there also were a couple of trees that were taken down. I guess they weren't in the greatest condition.
Yeah. No, I do like the trees, but that space is still available. Yeah.
Brings some new life into the neighborhood over there as well. Brings the kids outdoors, so thank you. Yeah. Well, that's it. Again, thank you very much, Jimmy.
So you guys would like to put this forward for the council? Because this looks really good.
We probably will go to the council. We will be going to the council to award the construction contract, so that's sometime in August.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure we let you guys know when it's time to do the ribbon cutting and celebrate the opening of the park.
No, I think it's a bright idea.
Yeah. There you go. Thank you again.
Thanks, Jimmy. That's good.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Our next three items might look slightly familiar to Chair Pastor. We actually discussed this last month, but we'll review. Again, we wanted to let the commission know that part of our target for the coming fiscal year budgets for 2018, 19, and 2019, 20 was to try and narrow the gap between our subsidy, you know, our costs versus our revenues. And with costs growing and revenues kind of staying flat for the last several years, it was time to evaluate our programs and look at the subsidy we had and look for room to generate a little bit more revenue. So the first one that we looked at, that is on the agenda, is a proposed new fee for the after-school youth recreation program, and this would be effective next fall, the next school year 2018. Currently, that monthly fee is $64, and for the number of youth we serve, there's about close to 300 youth at four different sites, and it generates about $180,000 a year out of about $255,000 in direct expenses to run that program. So to narrow that subsidy gap a little bit, we're proposing a modest $5 a month increase, so the fee would go from $64 to $69, and generate about another $20,000 in revenue a year. This is part of a series of rate adjustments that we will be bringing to the city council at their rig of the meeting on May 14. So it's the next actual, next meeting of the council, beginning next month. But I wanted to alert you guys as the Recreation Commission to what we had been working on for the last couple of months. So are there any questions about the fee schedule for the after-school recreation program?
No, not at this time there, Joseph, for me. Anyone?
No, I think I'm a big fan of sliding scale and like bigger.
We have some scholarship available, not a whole lot. It's still, if you break it down by the hour...
Oh, no, it's very affordable, and that's kind of my point. My son goes to an after-school program.
And some of the sites, you know, the sites vary from school to school, too. Some sites were running at capacity, some sites were not. But for historical perspective, and I'm sure Chair Pastor remembers, this was a program citywide back in the day that was offered for free.
Yeah.
So it was sometime around 2007-ish, I believe, when the city's overall fiscal health was on life support, that they started looking at these subsidies programs. And the city council at that time still favored subsidizing recreation programs for youth and seniors, but wanted some cost recovery. So we went from no fee at all to a, it was $40 initially. That was 11 years ago, so it's been gradually increased over those years as our costs have increased. You know, the cost of labor has gone up quite a bit in those 11 years, not to mention that the health and the pension obligations that the city has. So we're proposing a $5 increase per month on that.
Yeah, it's very reasonable. I just, sometimes I want to like pay more to cover more scholarship, and like having a structure to do that is nice sometimes.
I've done some of the researches from other cities on recreations and programs and stuff, and yeah, and actually, Daily City is inexpensive.
Yeah.
Inexpensive.
We're not the lowest, but we're not the highest, and that tends to be the theme around here for a lot of programs and activities.
Very comfort zone.
And in fact, if there's no more questions than that, that might be a good segue into our next fee proposal. Any questions about after-school?
No, not at all.
Okay. So the next thing we're looking at is increasing aquatic, the fee for aquatics lessons. And in this case, we were quite a bit lower than most of the surrounding communities. And what we're proposing, this nice handy chart here, are we, in fact, we are the, pretty much the lowest, if you break it down. But anyway, thank you for sharing that, Denise. So the current fee for the youth lessons is, and it's our most popular, is $53 a month for Daily City residents. And Daily City residents do take the majority of those spaces, because as you recall, there's priority registration for Daily City residents, and then if there are spaces left over, non-residents can come in. And if a non-resident gets a space, it's $66 a month. So there's a little bit of a premium that we charge people that live outside of Daily City. So we're proposing on the youth lessons to go from $53 a session to $60 a session, which would, you know, still keep us definitely on the lower end of swim lessons on the peninsula in San Mateo County. Actually, even in the Bay Area, it's hard to find swim lessons that are more affordable than that. There's some nearby that go as high as $168, $160, so, you know, we're definitely on the lower end of the scale. We do offer preschools lessons. Those are a little more labor-intensive. The staff ratio is smaller. Those lessons are a little bit more expensive. They're right now $59 for Daily City residents. We're proposing those go to 65. Teen and adult would be the same as the youth, as would be the swimmer's aid. And then we do offer semi-private lessons that are quite popular. A lot of parents like the extra attention for their kids. Those are understandably a lot more expensive because of the staff ratio there, and those are currently $110, and it would go up to $120. And then we also offer lifeguard classes and to go through the Certified Lifeguard Program, which is an expensive program to administer right now, that's $193, and we're proposing $220 for that program. So that's it in a nutshell. I've got numbers if you were interested. I know you were there, I think, at the opening of the new Giamona pool back in 2010. And so since the day the pool opened, we've seen a steady increase in the demand for lessons. And the after-school club is doing great. We've got over 6,400 participants in the programs per year, and that generates about $370,000 in revenue every year. And we think with these rate increases, we will be at about $415,000 of revenue generated.
And we're again proposing these fees in the fall, because currently our summer sessions are already in play, and they kind of roll into the next season.
Any questions about the swim lesson fee increase?
When you speak of sessions, you know, beginning with the preschool to youth, is that like week sessions or two-week sessions for...?
Oh, how many weeks are they?
Are they six or eight? I can't remember. They're more than a month.
That's not actually in the...
Yeah, it goes for about six to eight sessions. Like, so classes.
Classes, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And it goes for anywhere between a two- and a four-week period, depending on if you're doing a Monday-Wednesday class or a Tuesday-Thursday, or if you, in the summertime, it goes Monday through Thursday, a Saturday, a Sunday.
They're really high-quality. My son took one, too, and the instructor remembered him and picked him out at the open tot gym like months later, like, that's, you know? So they're great.
And they're using all the lanes there at the Giamona then, correct, in terms of these lessons and all?
There's no open water.
Oh, that's good to know.
We need another pool.
Yeah.
Pools are very costly to build, and they're very costly to maintain, so, you know, even at the $415,000, we anticipate raising, you know, the staff costs and the maintenance of the pool is much higher than that on an annual basis.
You should charge extra.
Even before the latest water rate increase, I think that just the cost of the water, which for some reason I know this is 365,000 gallons in that pool, is about $70,000 a year. So just the cost of the water itself, not to mention the chlorine and the continued maintenance and electrical and all that.
And the filters.
Swimming pools are expensive, whether it's a public pool at a high school or in your backyard, or in Henry Dolger's case, in his living room, pools are really expensive.
And the staff does a really good job of making sure that all the kids are safe while providing the lessons and using as much of the space as they can, because unfortunately, the pool, the way it's structured, they, there's not as much...
Deck?
No.
Just kidding.
Small, the shallow end, there's not a great deal of shallow end, so they really use it to the best of their ability to make sure everybody's getting in there.
Right. At least we're not walking into rusted beams anymore.
Yes. And the pool, it's really amazing how well it's holding up.
Yeah, that's great.
Doesn't look much different than it did the day it opened.
Yeah, not to mention the rooms that are set aside for, you know, the private parties and the events that go on there along with the swimming.
Yeah, and we continue to offer private parties, and we do about 80 of those a year. And it's, one, parents I've talked to that have done them, they love them because you're there, you have your party, and you walk away from it, and the kids have a ton of fun, and there's no mess really to clean up other than, you know, the classroom, so it's a great value, too. Any more questions about swim lessons or move on?
I agree with the fee of the increase. I mean, I swim in that pool, Giamona Pool, and I was also there this Saturday and brought some kids over. And yeah, it costs to maintain pools, and that price is still reasonable on my, you know? Yeah. I think that's it for that.
So when does this go before the...
All three of these items that we're talking about are going to go to the city council in one bundled package at their meeting on Monday, May 14.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next item is the new proposed fees for facilities and field rentals, and it's in a slightly confusing package here, but I'll try to break it down by facilities. And we, the facilities that we rent are now kind of broken down into small, medium, and large. And the two smallest facilities that we rent are Hillside Clubhouse and March Bank Clubhouse. And right now, those rent for $50 an hour, and the proposed rate for that would be $60 per hour. And kind of a standalone category out there is probably our most popular rental facility, and that's the Larkham Clubhouse at Westlake Park. Currently rents for $75. Now, we're proposing to raise that to $85 per hour. And then we've got a whole bunch of kind of midsize between capacities of 130 and 150. That includes Geller Park Clubhouse, the Activity Room of War Memorial, Cafe Dolger at the Dolger Senior Center, the Merced Room that's immediately adjacent to Pacelli Gym, and the Altea Community Center. and the Al Telia Community Center. And right now, there's different fees for those facilities, ranging from $75 an hour to $100 an hour. We are proposing that all of those midsize facilities get raised to $110 an hour. And then another standalone is the Lincoln Park Community Center. It's got a capacity of 160. It's kind of on the high end of the midsize. And it's currently at $125 an hour. We're proposing to increase that to $130. And then the Bay Shore Community Center, War Memorial, and Pacelli Event Center is currently $200 an hour, and we're proposing no change there. And again, we did a pretty thorough look at what the going rates are for other facilities across the county. And we felt comfortable where the gym was, but some of these smaller halls and clubhouses were way below the market for that. So those are coming up, and the gym rentals are staying the same. And I might add that those gym rentals specifically for parties, not for athletic events. We'll get to that in a second. We've also, with our risk management folks, have reviewed the insurance, and we're revamping that a little bit. Right now, the insurance prices range anywhere from $105 per event to 200. And it kind of depends on what type of event it is. Now, we're breaking that down to events without alcohol present. So for the smaller ones, up to 100 people, would be $105. Larger events with no alcohol would be $140 insurance premium they would have to pay along with the rental fee. And if they're serving alcohol, those fees go up a little bit. The smaller parties will be paying an insurance fee of $165 if they're serving alcohol. And the larger ones, again, the capacity from 101 up to 500 would be an extra fee of $200. That's straight to our insurance provider. That's not anything, the city is not making money off insurance. We're just protecting ourselves and the people renting.
Good.
And that is not optional. It's mandatory along with that. We also have a deposit fee. We have some really good renters and some really not so good renters. And one of the incentives is that we have them pay a deposit to make sure they take good care of our facilities and clean up and play by the rules. Right now, the deposits range from $250 up to $800. And we're going to break that down into increments depending on the number of people participating. So the smaller facilities would be $250 deposit. The medium-sized one would be $400, and the large, 800, and the very large would be a $1,000 deposit. Again, it's, excuse me, an incentive for them to live up to their end of the rental agreement that they sign at the time they reserve the facility. We also have for people who don't pay their fee on time. Right now, there's a $50 penalty. That doesn't seem to discourage people too much. So we're going to raise that up to 100 and hope more people will pay their full fee on time. And the non-resident fee is going to go from 75 to 100. Denise, I might have to ask you to take over.
Do you want to take a moment and have a drink of water?
Pardon?
Do you want to take a moment and have a drink of water?
If I can't go further, Denise will pick it up.
Okay.
And then we also have the picnic shelter at Geller Park. It's the only picnic area that we rent, and that's right now $100 a day. We're going to $125. Denise is going to tell you about athletic fields.
Okay, so currently, we have in place, it was an hour, hour and a half, but we're going to a two-hour minimum, and we're adding a rental deposit fee of $250 because along the lines of our facilities, we want to make sure that, you know, if any damages occur, we can kind of get those minimal costs back. Our softball and baseball diamonds currently rent $20 an hour for residents and 30 for non-residents. We're bumping that $10 on both sides to 30 and 40. The turf field, turf soccer field, I should say. Currently, the rental is 66 an hour for a regular rental. And then it breaks out to DC outside schools, $50 an hour. DC private schools, $35 an hour. We're just going to roll that all into one and make it a $75 an hour rental for all. The grass field is $33.33. Don't ask us how we got the 33 cents in there, but it's going to round up to $40 an hour. Lights for the diamonds, $10 to $20. Lining for the field, 10 to 20. The gymnasiums for athletic rentals, currently a regular rental, $75. Outside school in Daly City, $50. Private school in Daly City, 35. It's going to roll up to $100 for all. And then $250 an hour if you're reserving both upper and lower gymnasiums in the War Memorial Community Center. Currently, there is no athletic, or no insurance fee in place for any athletic rental. And we are going to, based on our, again, risk management insurance, 1 to 100 people is $250, 101 to 500 people is $360. And that fee also just goes to the insurance. We don't get any of that cost. And then the miscellaneous, we have some groups that like to come down and park at the Westlake Park overnight. So currently, we charge an $8 per car per day. That's going to remain the same. And the tennis courts rent, if somebody wanted to come down to rent, it would be $5 per court per hour, and that's going to remain the same.
How many cars is it per night?
I think they have like anywhere between 10 and 20 vehicles. And it's just really an overnight.
20's on the high end.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not.
Usually, they carpool, they're doing an overnight trip. They'll carpool to meet the bus there.
Parking right next.
As low as eight, and I don't know that we've had more than 15 at one time. And they tend to park in the farthest corner.
Okay.
So it doesn't impact the lunch program.
You know, just look at the fees here. When you got to the part where, you know, and talk about late fees and non-resident, late fees being at the new rate of $100. Maybe I missed it, but when you were talking about the earlier fees for rental of the facilities, are there non-resident rental fees for the facilities or?
So it's a flat fee.
Flat fee.
So a rent, a person comes in to rent, there's an hourly rate. And then if you're a non-resident, you have to pay a flat fee of, currently it's $75 an hour. I mean, $75 flat fee, now you'll be paying 100 if you're a non-resident. It's not on an hourly basis, it's just an additional $100 that you will pay as a non-resident.
Okay, just want to clear that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The insurance fee for the fields and gyms is that per usage?
Yeah, so if they use it for one time, it's that rate. Or if they use it, if they have an ongoing, that's the rate that attaches to it.
And that's true for the softball and baseball diamonds?
Mm-hmm.
And how will this kind of like improve for the narrowing of the subsidies and what have you? Narrowing of the gap that we're looking to achieve here?
Well, currently, the facility and field rentals are extremely popular.
Yeah.
And it also bases on the time of year it is. So if you're hitting May, June, and somebody calls up now to try and get a rental, somebody's booked, you know, May 1st back on, you know, six months prior. They'll find that day and they'll, you know, come in and what have you. They, the rental fees on both facility and fields do a very good job of building the revenue up. The only true cost that we have, other than the actual maintenance of the facilities, is the hourly rate that we have for our part-time employees that we expend. We're not going to be able to recover the cost of the maintenance to the, to the facilities themselves because it's a fixed cost that we don't have any control over. So that we get charged that through Public Works.
Yeah.
But those are real costs and they're expensive. And I know, you know, with the gyms, we periodically have to resurface the floors and replace light fixtures and bathroom fixtures. It's a high maintenance activity. And the more, the more use it gets, the higher demand is for maintenance.
I know that we, on the subject of the lights for the diamonds and light, for instance, are the conditions of the lights pretty much in good shape that we, as far as we know?
No, I wouldn't say good. That might be an overstatement, they're adequate.
Adequate?
Baseball, softball, diamond?
They're in need of upgrading.
Okay.
The only ones that are truly in use currently are the ones at Westlake. The Geller ones are not in use.
The fields?
The lights.
The lights.
Mm-hmm, lights.
Especially around the softball, the small diamond, I mean, but clubhouse, but the shelter.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, well, thank you very much. Very comprehensive, as usual.
My chart.
Long overdue.
So all of that will be going to the city council on Monday, May 14.
Nice.
Day after Mother's Day. So that was the last of our formal reports, and the commissioner's turn now.
Well, from the commissioner's side of it, you know, there have been several activities that are going on recently in the Daly City community. And fortunately, you know, being drawn at two different places required at the same time wasn't able to attend some of them. But any one of us had a chance to visit any of the activities in the community recently, the health fair or anything along those lines?
No, I haven't been able.
Well, again, for all that goes on in the community.
There are more opportunities coming up.
More opportunities, yes. And there are a list of them that are about to be announced, so.
Okay, I'll take, unless commissioners have reports, all right. I'll take that as my cue to share with you our upcoming events, starting, believe it or not, it's going to be May next week. And Friday, May 4th, we will have our Cinco de Mayo celebration at the Lincoln Park Community Center, always a lot of fun. And that's going to be from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And there will be food and entertainment, lots of it, and a raffle. And then on Saturday, May 12th, we've got a couple of things going on. Daly City Track and Field Meet at Jefferson High School at 8:00 AM. Also, that same day, at the Dolger Senior Center, there will be a hepatitis B event at the cafe. And Saturday, Saturday, May 19th, at the Cafe Dolger, will be a Mother's Day afternoon tea. And that is not sold out, it's getting really close. That's at 11:30 AM at the cafe. And you might, if you're interested in going, you might find out if there are some tickets left. It's $15 for members of the center and $20 for guests. And also, another event we're having, we're having for active adults and seniors is on Thursday, May 24th, at the Pacelli Event Center, or backed by popular demand, the Active Adult Senior Fitness and Resource Fair. And it starts at 9:30 AM, goes until noon, and it's free. And we had about 400 seniors participate in that last year. I'll also remind everybody, too, that it is time to register for Junior Giants for the youth of our community. It's one of the most outstanding programs available to young families in Daly City. It's absolutely free, a program operating both at Geller Park and at Westlake Park. And I don't, I've lost track of how many years we've done it, but it fills up. It fills up, so if you're interested, now is the time to register at juniorgiants.org.
And I would like to chime in on a couple of things. So the Cinco de Mayo celebration, we have two interns through San Francisco State University. One of the interns, her project was to prepare Cinco de Mayo event at Lincoln Park Community Center. And then on that side note, the other intern, because we spoke of the facility and field rentals, her plan was to create a visual for the community to, if they couldn't go to one of the facilities, you could go online and view the facility in 360 view. So I would tell all of you to go online and go to www.dalyacity.org, click on our Recreation tab, then click on the Facility Rentals tab, and then you could actually physically look at all the facilities in a 360 view. And she did a really, really good job, and I'm, she's going to stay aboard on that.
There is a shortcut to that. If you don't want to do I like clicking, you can just go directly to dalyacity.org/rentals. That'll get you there.
There you go.
Great.
And just for, for those of us that are listening, for the Junior Giants, what are the ages?
It starts at age five, and I believe we go up to 14. Some other cities will go as high as 18, but we're doing five to 14.
And the last tidbit is, if you want to attend the Mother's Day afternoon tea, you do have to be a member to attend it, and then the members can purchase the $20 per guest. So just be a member, be a member.
Be a member, become a member.
Terrific, thank you. And seeing that we did not get any participants from our audience for cards today, this is going to wind down our conclusion of this evening's meeting, unless there's something else we wanted to add. Nothing here, so we call for this meeting to be adjourned, a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, those in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, this meeting is now adjourned.